Well, according to my phone, 6:00 P.M., start meeting with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come on. Okay, I charged these batteries. I do have another battery. You could hold your mouth, Ray. All right, well, we opened the meeting at 6:00 P.M., we had the Pledge of Allegiance, and we need approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda and discussion.
I have a question. On the agenda under item 11, it skips from A to E. Is that a, just a screw up, or is it deliberate?
I would say it's a B instead of an E.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. How about the minutes of January 10th and 17th meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 10th and January 17, 2022 meetings.
No second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve both the January 10th and 17th, 2022, meeting minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll move on to public input.
I have public input. First thing I'd like to ask, I have handed out some documents, one, it has to do with the Sunshine Request, which has not been delivered yet. It had to do with a flood map. Is there a reason why there's a delay in that flood map, or what?
I haven't had a chance to get to it, but I will.
Oh, still in 2022?
I didn't get it until 2022.
Okay, but I...
But you know, you don't need to be sarcastic.
Yeah, you'll get it as soon as possible.
Well, that's not the case. It should be on file, because I'm under the impression that people have been told that they're in a flood zone, so you've got it, so why is it hard to pull up a flood map?
Next.
Okay. I also handed out, Bros, why are we going through a third party instead of doing a joint powers with Bear's Heard or some of the others? If you get a third person involved, then you're involving a third billing group. Why is that, why are we doing this, or why are we contemplating doing it?
We're not doing it, we're contemplating.
I said that.
Okay, next.
And I've already touched on the error on the agenda items, you failed to fix that. HRC, financials. There should be a report on the HRC, the financials. Is that not on the table? Is there a reason why there's not, that's on how they're doing financially?
Well, the meeting was just the other day, but it wasn't an actual meeting, it was an extra meeting. So, when we have our annual meeting, there'll be information.
One last question. Is there an Echo device in this room, or an Alexa, and is that on?
Alexa, tell me what time it is. Alexa?
Okay.
What is it today? Alexa, are you there? No, I would say no.
Okay. I'll take that as a sarcastic, because you can't leave a message for that. Okay, I'm done. I'm done. Yeah, I know it's an answer.
All right, is there any other public input?
When I, without circulating my petition, I talked to several people, and some people want to know if there's ever going to be any way to pay their water bill online.
Yes, that is something that's in the works.
And then I did, was wondering what's going on with Nelson Austin.
Hudson, Sam's Court.
Okay, they're just waiting?
Correct.
Just...
Yeah.
I've talked to him a number of times, and, I mean, he's working on it.
He will be here.
Oh, Sam, you mean, is working on it.
Sam.
He will be here on the 21st.
Yeah, I just was curious. I haven't seen any activity over there recently.
Any other public input? Hearing none, we'll go on to the Police Department. Chief Scholar is here. Putting this beam of paper here. Let's see, page three, page four, page five. Oh, that leaves, been kind of busy.
Yeah, it's been kind of busy, so I just wanted to give you a little update. I wanted to pretty much let the council know as a whole that Grayson's going to the Academy on February 28.
That's still 12 weeks?
It's 13.
Will he be able to do some weekends?
Yep, he said that he wants to do every other weekend. He also said that he would take call since it's in Sioux Falls a couple days a week. This should be with weekend work, that would all be overtime, so I also wanted to throw that idea out there, let you guys deliberate and think about it, and let it be up to you there.
Because he wants to actually work, right, and is he going to work some nights too, did you say, or?
He just want, he just said he'd be available to take call some nights during the week.
Call, and then on the...
And then hopefully work some weekends as well.
Yeah.
So, he said he doesn't want to just be doing schoolwork, he'd rather still be able to help the community out.
Is there a lot of studying that he will have to do?
Generally, it's, you know, there's some studying involved with it, but I wouldn't say it's, you know, most of the stuff does get done in class, but obviously test and stuff you do want to study for, so.
Chief, would you say the drug situation has leveled off, or?
It's staying steady. I'd say, it kind of stinks on sometimes on these reports for you guys, if the dispatcher itself does not code it as a narcotic and drugs, it won't show up. Like, I think there is a couple DUIs on here that didn't show up that I just seen. I can change it myself, but it just pulls off at the dispatch end, so I'd say it's staying steady.
Well, I think that statement is what we, as a council, need to realize that even though this report might not show it, still...
Yep, I still, I try to get them to change it if I can, but then sometimes if I don't see it after 24 hours, then I need to contact the lead dispatcher to get that done, so.
Do many of the non-hazardous moving violations result in fines and...
The non-hazard ones are warnings, and then the hazard traffic violations are where citation is given in some form or another.
Okay, thank you. Now, the last page is new. What?
That I think I'm going to leave up to the Public Safety Committee for you guys, a little bit later.
Okay, okay.
And then I think it's going to be a reoccurring, maybe discussion, so I can dive deeper on a later date, and if anybody has any questions or anything, feel free to contact me.
Just for my own clarification?
Yes.
I just counted, there was 21 ambulance calls.
Yes.
Okay. You, I just, for my own, you are required to go to those?
We are not required. We are not required to go to those. If the council wants us, you know, requires us, I suppose, yeah, we could go to every single...
I just kind of wanted to know how, okay.
If it's, say, at the nursing home, we tend to not go, just because there's more qualified staff already there. If we're on shift, and, you know, if we're on shift 100% of the time, we go. And then if, you know, say it's a late night call or something like that, if it's something more serious, we go to those ones.
Okay. I just needed to wonder.
How are things, relevant?
How are things?
Yeah.
They're all right.
As good as could be.
As good as we can make them, so, that's the way I like to look at it.
We've been pretty lucky with the lack of snow.
I can agree with that.
At least on the, at least on the snow removal budget.
Yep.
If we ever get snow, are there some vehicles that will need to be taken and towed?
Yep, I think the first time, first time is, first time there's a snow alert is the warning phase, and then second, snow alert is when citations are issued, and then if it's a reoccurring problem, then that's when they get towed.
Well, we did have one snow alert, but, I mean, that was probably 2021, not 2022, but...
That's all I got.
Thank you very much, Chief. Okay, well, let's see. Barring more discussion regarding the Police Department, Bros Engineering's Mirini chip seal project is still on the table, or is now on the table, I should say.
I did not put in a gain in your package, because we got that at the previous meeting, and I did speak with Sam about that, asking if he had a chance to review it, and he said, if you do make a motion to participate in a program, he'd like the verbiage at the end with contract approval from City Attorney. This motion tonight would just give the go-ahead to agree to participate, and then Lonnie will contact Bros Engineering and give them our particulars, and then put us on the list of communities. And then we'll actually get a formal agreement with our current information that Sam would like to review before it's finalized.
Lonnie, Lonnie seems to be pretty much in favor of it. I don't know if anyone on the, let's see here, Water and Streets, Lucas, Linda, and Ward Two Alderman would be on the Water and Streets. I don't know if you folks have had an opportunity to think about this much and really discuss it between you two.
I've thought about it some. I kind of made a couple phone calls around to other towns, and I'm waiting to hear back from them to kind of see what they've been doing, and try to get some big comparisons, you know, just seems like, I mean, it seems like a decent deal, but with that membership and additional fees, I don't know. Seems like enough, you know?
Yeah, I guess, I have a little trouble with the, with the, I guess, fee.
I do too.
That being said, I don't know, anytime you have an engineer involved, there's a fee.
Usually there's a surprise when you're all done.
Yeah, that's true, too.
But I do think that we need to take care of the streets, one way or another.
Oh, yeah.
Just who does it? You know, we want the best bang for the buck, and what's best for the city.
And this last year, we were fortunate in that we not only did chip sealing, but we did some of that fog sealing over the top, so we did, on our own, decide where that goes. It was free. But I mean, it was, it cost us labor of Lonnie's and probably Dale's, but...
I mean, I think Lonnie kind of mentioned about hauling her own rock, you know, I think the night she was here speaking with us, you know, and that would definitely save us some money, but I don't know how it would come out on the end of, you know, the principal numbers, I guess, you know? I don't know how it would figure out.
So who'd you end up, who did you call then?
Called Irtin.
Okay, did they, they don't do it this way, though, do they?
No, no.
Okay.
They called my sister, and she lives in there.
Okay.
And trying to get hold of Sioux Center, too.
Just to get some...
Just kind of give them comparison.
Does Centerville do that, where she lives?
I think, I think she mentioned Centerville, didn't she?
No, I think so.
I don't know.
I don't know if Centerville does, but, because they do more, so they have Beersford, which was, I think, the farthest east one they had.
Oh, okay.
But then they had a lot of them in the Charles mix country.
Right. You just try to think of the ones that are kind of, you know, are size of town.
Yeah, and close by.
Yeah.
No matter what, closer is better.
Yeah.
We really don't want to know what kind of a bargain it is unless we...
Get some hard bids from somebody else.
Ask for bids and see what's out there.
I guess that's what I'd like to do, is just kind of see if we can pull in some, somebody else or a few other contractors and see, see how it would compare, you know?
Right.
That's how I feel, you know?
Who's there?
And try to compare apples to apples.
Exactly.
Either the Road Guys or, where's another, Katie?
Top Coat.
Yeah, they're both being used in, but Road Guy has gotten bid the last, like, quarter, five years.
Well, even if we have Road Guy and Top Coat, I think that's what she decided, you know, that is an option. I guess, myself, I'd like to hold off on this a little bit. I know it kind of pushes the time, but...
Normally, we put the bids out in February, open the bids in March, but...
So when does it, if we went with this other company, this Bros, when does, when do they have to know? Do they have a deadline, too? I can't remember.
Well, you would want to let them know if we're going to participate or not, so that they can put the bids out collectively, so they know how much material they can put the bid out for.
Sure.
Well, I think it would be best to talk to the Road Guys, talk to Top Coat, and talk to Bros, and say, "Bid." Whoever wins, wins.
That would be two separate bids, then. I mean, it'd be two separate bid packages we'd be sending out, because this would be, this bid package Bros would take care of, all that part of it. And if we do it the way we've done it in the past, then we'd send out our...
Just Top Coat to...
Top Coat, okay.
Well, what's wrong with that? I mean...
Well, there's an extra publishing cost, and what will happen?
It's a lot cheaper than...
Maybe we've got to look at the option with whoever, whichever contractor it may be, if we can haul it on the rock, and then we've got a nice truck, you know, and if we can get out of Sioux Falls or Hayward, you know, like you have, I don't know where we could get that. But I mean, if they could tell us how many tons we would need to get, you know, a close figure, that would definitely save some money.
That would.
But is Bros going to let us do that, or Road Guy going to let us do that?
You know, that, good question. You know, she didn't say no that night, you know, when Lonnie said that, asked her about it, but she didn't give us the figure either, what, how much money we would be saving.
And even when we have done it the way we have done it in the past, we didn't haul our own rock. So they brought it in right before they were going to put it down.
Yep. Well, I think Lonnie's got a pretty good handle on what means to be, I don't know, the engineer.
I agree.
I mean, he's got a five-year, forty-year plan now, maybe.
That's, that's just... Fog seal is kind of a nice thing to think about, but we could just tack that on. I don't know why we couldn't. Why couldn't we just say, add a bid for the fog seal?
Yeah, I agree.
So... Save us some money, wouldn't it? Looks like it would.
I think it would, but I...
What, what, what about you ladies that have not said anything yet? I mean, what, what do you think? I mean...
It makes sense to get some bids, I think. Yeah, I agree. It does make more sense to get bids. I just want to make sure we get it done in the timeline, so we can't miss out on something.
Right.
Yeah.
We got to move.
Soon, yeah.
Next meeting, we have to make a decision.
Couldn't we ask Lonnie to get a Road Guy bid? I don't know, would we do that?
Well, normally, we'd have that by...
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a bid, it would be, he could maybe, he could maybe get us what they think the quote's going to be.
Okay.
Would it be so much a foot, so much a yard, I mean?
It's so much a square yard.
Square, I would say, so I mean, they could give us an average, say we want 13,000, you know, throwing that number out there, kind of give us a close figure or quote.
Sure.
Give us an idea, I guess.
That's, that's what they've done every year, so. Those two, I mean, so why can't these folks do the same, I mean, while they already did?
Yeah.
They've given us credit.
Yeah. So the reason you think Lonnie wants this, it would just help him timewise?
There's a lot of benefit to it. Number one, it's bulk purchasing, so if you have all these communities going in on it together, chances are you're going to get a better price. And then they'll just, and I would even venture to guess that mobilization will probably be less, because they'll just do a circuit, and it'll work out well for them. And again, just buying everything in mass quantity instead of our 13,000 square yard quantity. The other benefit that Lonnie was looking at is they provide services that, when we have a staff of two, or even three, if we use janitors, we can't do all the things that they can do. I mean, they'll take care of traffic control. And we've never, we haven't really done a lot of the fog sealing, which would be a new venture for us. I think it's a positive thing for our streets, but, yeah.
Budget-wise, how does this work?
We would actually probably increase the amount that we would bid, because some of the curb and gutter money that we had budgeted will probably move over to chip seal to allow us to do more square yards. So, my personal opinion is, even though there is a fee for Bros Engineering to oversee the project, I think you're going to get a better product for not as much money.
One of the things she just mentioned now, sticks in my mind, and that's the oil. I mean, they know how much oil should be laid down. They know what type of oil and what grade of oil, and, I mean, they're engineers, they, they do this, so...
But Road Guys does this all summer long, too.
I realize that, but at the same time, they could scrimp a little here and there, and say, well, yeah, that's enough oil. And it's not enough oil. Having the engineer involved does at least give you that oversight.
Accountability.
Yeah, exactly. So, again, I'm not arguing for them, I'm just saying, this is the way that, I mean, that's one of their benefits, so. I don't know. I like saving money. I like saving money a lot.
What about just seeing if we can get a quote then, from the Road Guys, and talk about it at the next meeting?
And even...
We already have a quote from them pretty close, don't we, from this Bros?
Yeah.
It's a sample contract, yeah, we would probably update it.
Yeah.
We just wanted to have something for you to look at, so we just went off of last year's recommendation. So we'd probably fine-tune it now with Bros to get a better product for you, and then Lonnie could probably put a number together. It probably wouldn't be a formal bid, but it would be...
At least to give us something to look at, maybe, to compare.
Compare, yeah.
Is this Bros just a one-year thing, and then next year it'd be a different, it's not a, you sign up, you sign up?
Right.
But it would be something we would do every year.
If, if we offered to, yeah.
Right, okay. How did we, how did we come about finding them, or did they find out?
Last summer, she came into my office. She was a graduate here at Bell Sister, and she was in town visiting people, and she came in to see us and asked about chip sealing and how we did it, and then let me know that they had started this new program, balking communities together.
Well, comparing Road Guys, Top Coat, and them, at least gives you folks the ability to make an informed decision, so I think that's wise.
I would assume the Road Guy and Top Coat, at least, they have an, like, I'd say, a manager that oversees the project on, on the job dump every day?
Yeah, they have to have supervisor.
They have a crew. I don't know the capacity of the crew. They have a crew that comes in.
I mean, they're still in business for multiple years, I mean, we got to be doing something, right?
Yeah, that's true.
How many years has this company been doing this? Do you know that?
That I don't know.
Name sounds familiar. I mean, I've heard that Bros Engineering for quite a while, but, I mean, I don't know how long.
If I may make a comment, I handed out a handout from Bear's Heard's last year quote from Bros. Bros uses a company out of Minnesota, I did some research. They use a company out of Minnesota to do the, the laying of the, the material. And this will give you an idea. I don't think Bros necessarily is all that old of a company, and I can't, I cannot remember offhand what the actual company that comes in and lays the stuff down, but it's...
Aztec.
It's my, it's my impression that they came out of Minnesota.
And that is accurate. They put the bids out, so Road Guy, Top Coat, they dealt with some companies around the Sioux Falls area and Aztec, and Aztec has one quote every year.
And our DOT specifies what grade of oil and stuff to use. You can go out and look it up, because I have. They specify the lot.
That doesn't mean they have to use it, but... But anyhow, the, the point is, um, this is an engineering company that's providing a service above and beyond the actual project, so.
So what I'm kinda gathering is maybe they're just some contractors that subcontracts to work out to Aztec, you said, of Minnesota?
They do the same thing that we do, only on a much larger scale. So they'll, they'll compile all the towns that agreed to participate, and then they'll know their quantities, and then they'll put out a bid, just like we have done in the past.
Except, instead of Lonnie only contacting two or three or four, they contact forty, and then those forty lead down to one, and then, so. I mean, you're, you're paying for a service, actually, with the engineering firm. So, again, Lonnie's done a fine job. I, I, I think we're okay, but it'd be worth giving it all three, so, or ten, if he can get ten bids, so.
I have a question from Ms. Larson. I need to tap any of those handouts.
Again, that's why we have, we have joint powers. Don't we? Joint powers is when Alcestar works with Beersford and some of the other communities, and they get together and they share their strengths.
And have we talked to Beersford?
Mm-hmm.
And they were very-
They were happy.
Very happy, correct? I guess I would feel better if we just got a couple bids.
So you know where your hat's.
Yeah, yeah, just, just so to protect ourselves. And I don't think they have to be perfect, just a quote, don't we think?
Yeah.
Just to see if we're all in the ballpark.
Yeah, absolutely.
We know it might be a little bit more, but-
Yeah.
How much more?
Yeah, yeah, how many thousands more.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Well, we either need a motion or we're gonna move on.
I'd say we wait till next meeting.
Okay, we will move on to item eight. There's a Horizon Health Foundation PARS for Patients document. I think everyone's got it.
Yes, it's in the packet. So Horizon Healthcare is going to be doing a large golf tournament this summer, June tenth, up at the community center. The funds raised from this are going to benefit our clinic. They're gonna do, um, an upgrade in our clinic and then purchase one piece of equipment for the clinic. It's about a forty-seven thousand dollar expense for the whole thing, the upgrade and the equipment purchase. And, um, I'm working with Brianna. She is the person that is in charge of this tournament. Uh, we planned, and then I met with her last week. And, um, she just wanted to make sure that, uh, the council was, um, approved, that they are going to have a raffle alongside the benefits they're gonna be doing in the clubhouse. So she sent this letter.
And we would want to grant approval of that raffle activity in conjunction with the golf tournament. So we would need a motion.
I'll make a motion to grant approval for raffle activities in conjunction with the 2022 golf tournament. I, PARS for Patients.
I'll second you.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the raffle activity in conjunction with the 2022 golf tournament for PARS for Patients for the, actually, the Alcestar clinic. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I think there's some documentation that you might have seen regarding this water pipe locator, and it's something that, uh, I believe-
So in your package is, is just a quote. Um, I only have one handout or one flyer that Lonnie brought in, so.
We can hand this around.
That's a image of the device.
Seems to have a thing that allows you to put a handle on it, so you're not right down on the ground there. But it's basically an inductive device that picks up water pipe, water flow.
So Lucas, you got to watch the demonstration?
Yeah, I, yeah, I've seen it, yeah. I think it's, uh, I think it's a good tool. I think there's a lot of training that, a lot of training goes along with that, you know what I mean? I, I, I think it'd be helpful. I think we got, Lonnie was saying, close to eight miles of pipe that we can't locate. So I think this would be a good tool, but I think it's gonna take, I, myself, if he wants it, I think he needs to go into the training, and I, I know he kinda felt that he didn't want to, but I guess that's, that's the only way I would hope for, is that he's gonna commit to going to it, because the next person, just say Lonnie quits, we hope he doesn't. I think he's a good asset for the town, but if he does quit, we're gonna send somebody else to a two-day training, too.
Not even a two-day training?
It is. One day, it's more of a hands-on, the second day, it's more of a, I should say it this way, one day is more of a classroom time, and the second day, it's hands-on, you're outside doing it. I think Lonnie kinda mentioned, or not Lonnie, the, the, uh, sales guy there talking about it. They'll pay for everything, we just gotta get them paid for their gas, you know?
To get them there.
To get them there, and that's it.
Training is included in-
Training is included in that price.
So would they be able to-
Agree, man, or what's going on?
Yeah, I was gonna say Madison, but I'm not sure.
Would they be able to locate the water pipe for the fairground?
Yeah. We took, um, when they did their demo, um, there was a foundation and pipe that we could not find, but they found it when they did the soil borings. And so that's why they selected the fairgrounds, or not the fairgrounds, but the wastewater place to do the demo. Well, they were gonna do the demo down there.
We did have the city shop there. I mean, you could- There was a steel culvert, you located both edges of it. But I mean, it's, it's a right angle, and you kinda gotta, there's a sensitivity button, you know, or not button, but more of a dial.
Yeah.
I, I don't know much about it, at all, but-
It looks like it's, I mean-
It'd be a good tool if you had the hands-on training, you know, and, and even the, the, the sales guy said, too, you know, it's gonna take practice and it's gonna take a lot of hands-on after you, you even go through this, but he says, the more you use it, the better you'll get, but, yikes. Lonnie, they're not gonna use it every day, so, you know, don't get too rusty with it. I think it'd be good to have.
Will they give us support? You know, like, say, you know, we're having trouble with it, will they, did they talk about support, you know?
Yeah, I think you'd walk you through any type of troubleshooting issues, you know? Um, and I think he does give them very often on, you know, pass them through, go to other towns. But, um, and I wanna say there was a three-year limited warranty on it, if I remember it.
Yeah.
So. And then there's another one just like it, but a little bit more advanced. It's got, it's more of a digital readout, I think that was eight thousand something, maybe three hundred.
And that one actually had a, a, a better readout, but Lonnie didn't feel we needed that. This type of a screen is sufficient for what we would need. Right now, we use two wires. And when Lonnie got sick, he lost his ability to detect electric.
Really?
So he can't locate anymore.
Oh.
Or it hasn't come back yet. Maybe it'll still come back.
Well, you've now seen the pamphlet. I don't know, it looks like it comes out of two different funds, one out of, half out of the water fund, half out of the sewer fund, if we decide to do this, but I assume, again, Lonnie has put his stamp of approval on it, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the pipe locator from Corin Maine. Three thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars coming from the water fund, three thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars coming from the sewer fund.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the purchase of a pipe locator from Corin Maine. Thirty-one twenty-five out of the water fund, thirty-one twenty-five out of sewer fund. Is there any discussion?
I guess my other discussion is, Lonnie, is he willing to go through this thing?
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right? Water locator. And now there's a promissory note. You have a document in your packet, I believe.
So late last fall, um, we passed a resolution, um, recognizing the shortfall of donations at timeframe between when the pledged amounts were coming in and when the city would actually receive them. And at that time, Gary McCallips offered to help us through this interim period, and the expenses that I have right now, he was granted a check for two hundred thousand. Now, we had talked about a, a five-year term, two payments a year, um, paying it off in that five-year time. Sam said statute allows it to go up to ten, so he put that in there, past ten years, but it would, I would like to get it done in five, if not faster, depending on the most-
Well, we could make-
Yeah, it says we can make-
Inconditioned payments, sir.
Correct. So.
What was that resolution number?
Eighteen.
Thank you.
Everybody's had an opportunity to look at the promissory note, and we, I guess we would have to have a motion to approve that promissory note.
So my question is, if it says we can do ten-year and a year, and if we make the motion for this, is this still? Cause this says we can have up to ten years.
Yeah.
But the motion always says five. Yes, it does.
Is, uh, is Gary all right with ten years?
I didn't talk to him about ten.
So we only talked to him about five years, then? So we can hardly do it without talking, we didn't have to do the five-year one, did we?
Unless we want to agree to a five-year, yeah?
Yeah, that's my thing. We either have to do the five or talk to him about a ten. And then five-year would be forty thousand dollars a year.
That's what I'm proposing.
Yeah, yes, but this one says-
This just says five.
So we think we'll have, we should have that amount of money coming in on the pledges anyway.
Correct. And the reason I, um, wouldn't want to extend it that long is because there's no interest involved in this, and so-
It's very nice to do this.
And to get it done as quick as we can.
So we just wanted to put what's in the-
Sam, you put the ten-year in there because per statute, we can go up to ten.
So let's say it's five years, devil advocate, it's not that. Could then, because of this, could it go five more years? Or not?
It would probably, you'd probably have to renegotiate an agreement-
With Gary.
With Gary or-
Gary Michaelis, the community center.
I think this document will change, that number will change from ten to five. I mean, I, if, if you make a motion about a five-year payback, that's what it's gonna be.
Yes, yeah.
That's it, so.
What about if something would happen to Gary? Can they call the help?
Um, that was not a best investment.
I mean, I don't know. I'm just asking, if you have a second. Quite often, you never know.
They, I, I, no, you don't.
We'll just wait for two weeks and we'll, we'll get answers to these questions?
Can we wait till two weeks, then? We aren't in any rush to do this?
Um, no, I, I received the check, but I didn't deposit the check until this was done.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I kinda would like to know if they could call it.
Do you have some outstanding bills that need to be paid before two weeks?
Oh.
Um, I should have enough funds to make the payment that I want to make.
Well, did you say you could call Sam?
Yeah, I was gonna, I talked to him earlier.
Well, we could just ask him that question, if they can call the help. I, I don't know, I just, because then we gotta come up with the money, then, but I guess that we-
We just have to take out a loan to short-term.
At that point, yeah.
With interest.
Right, so.
That's the beauty of this.
Yes, it is, very good.
Hey, Sam, it's Pat. Um, we are at the council meeting, and, um, we, there was a question that arose about the unsecured promissory note. If something would happen to Gary, can the family call the help sooner than that?
You don't have to get your own, uh, independent legal advice on the whether or not they can call the help. Um, as long as, as long as the terms are being paid, I don't think they can call it. Certainly, um, if the unsecured is in the sense that they're not receiving collateral, she is writing down the agent's name, and why is that on the here?
Okay. And then the, the other, um, it was, the understanding between Gary and myself is that we wouldn't go for longer than five years, um, even though you changed it to ten, and I know you said-
Yeah, that, that needs to be changed back, and, and the late time put ten in there is because the rest of the, is staying five, but the statute actually says it's one year to keep going ten. Statute certainly wanted it, so I forgot to change back to five, but I think it updated one that said five, I think.
So it, so it should say five?
No, the updated one just had your signature line on the bottom. It's still ten. Okay, no problem.
Yeah, no, it doesn't need to be five.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Sam. All right, sounds good, bye-bye. Okay.
So if he doesn't think he'll be called or-
And I can actually, I do have this as a Word document, so I can actually change that, so it, it's not a cross-out.
So it's five years and forty thousand?
Yeah.
And I would make a motion to approve, to sign the unsecured promissory note between City of Alcestar and Gary McCallips on the interim donation shortfall of two hundred thousand dollars from the, and it'll be paid, this money will be paid into the community center fund, right?
From-
And, and then we will pay it back over a period of five years with semi-annual payments, correct?
I'll second it.
Motion was made and seconded to approve, uh, promissory note between the City of Alcestar and Gary McCallips, interim donation shortfall for two hundred thousand dollars for the community center fund, five-year payback and semi-annual payments. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? opposed? Alright. Finance officer updates, letter A warrants. We need a motion to approve the January warrants.
Do you have any concerns about their warrant plan? I'll make a motion to approve the January warrant.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the January warrants. For twenty twenty-two, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Alright, letter A is done. Letter B, used to be letter E. B is reminders and updates. We're going to have dinner and dancing February twelfth. Looks kind of cool.
Yeah.
Next city council meeting is February twenty-first. And petition deadlines for those of you that are interested or even just willing to. I, I don't mean to be harsh or rude or anything, but it's necessary to vote. It's not, it's not just a good thing. It's necessary to vote. Your petition deadline is February twenty-fifth at 5:00 P.M. If and when there would be an election, it would be April twelfth of twenty twenty-two. So then we move on to the HRC update. You may have one of these in your packet. One thing that should be noted is lot number eight has been sold. So of the total number of lots that are available, there are only three. Lot nine, lot three, and lot four. And it's fantastic. I mean, it's, it's the best thing that we could ask for. And having two lots sold and one house put on is one thing. Having one lot sold and a house put on is much better for us over time. So it's looking very, very good. We did have a meeting, oh, I don't even know, it was a couple of weeks ago. And we invited every single renter to attend. And it was a very good meeting. We had a good discussion. We did opt to increase the rent for every, every single, one of the fourplex apartments, fifty dollars, which is twice as much as we've increased it every year when we've increased it. We've skipped an awful lot of years and we're way behind. Not to mention the fact that it never was, really, the HRC was never designed to be a landlord. It's the Housing Redevelopment Commission. It's, it's supposed to be an organization that builds something like this and then sells it to a developer. And that developer takes the responsibility, as well as the tax liability, which right now is zero. Because the HRC is part of the city. I mean, it's kind of a subsidiary. It's kind of a offshoot of the city. And because of that, there's no tax. And that's not good for the city. So we need to change that. And it, it could be good for the renters that could become owners. It could be good for the developer that owns and then rents. It's hard to say, but I can tell you, if we get tax money, it will be better for the city. And that's what the Housing Redevelopment Commission is supposed to do. We're supposed to sell these lots so that people put houses on these lots. And then pay taxes to help us put sewers in and put roads in and various other things. And that's what we're designed to do. And we're going to do that. So it's a kind of a new thrust. And I think it's, it's like Spock said, the needs of the many outweigh the needs of few or the one. I don't know what else to say. Linda would, I mean.
There's some things coming up hopefully that will develop that'll be very soon.
Good, yeah, I mean, well, first of all, here's, here's the thing. If we sell these three lots, we're going to have to put hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Don't even go there yet.
Into the development of a new place. Hundreds of thousands of dollars in order to redevelop the community. And we either, we either sit on our haunches and stagnate, or we move forward. So.
And Pat did tell me that my turn was on that, by the way.
No, well, we'll, we'll talk about that later.
Did I tell you?
You're not going to get off that easy.
Sure, but they enjoyed my input last time.
I thought it was good.
I don't, I don't mean to make it sound like you're going to be railroaded, but at the same time, we do need qualified people that are willing to work with other people, though.
I have a question for someone on the HRC. That vacant lot just to the west of the twin homes. Why doesn't make it sold?
It's privately owned.
It's a good question. We actually, it's just recently.
It is sold, oh, okay.
Oh, relevant. Correct. And will it be developed or?
Yeah, yep. It's going to be a ranch house with a three-stall garage.
Nice. That's.
And the garage will be coming off.
Should she?
Good. That site's been there a long time.
That lot eight just, just got dealt with just a few days ago. And it actually looked like eight and nine were both going to go. But my goodness, they could have had a dotted hall there. I mean, that lot nine is huge.
Yes.
They built the house or what are they doing?
Yeah, it's a, it's a ranch style home. Nice, nice home. I'll tell you, every single one of them has been like that. I, I think it's, it's just like anything. If you build it, they will come, you know? When people see a house go up, they go, wow, that's pretty nice. We could do this, that, too, you know?
Do you think there's ever any hope in lot twelve will be built there?
No, I'll tell you what, if I could buy it, I'd buy it and I'd make sure there was something built on there. I, I, I don't know. I, I've heard stories and I don't even want to go there. But, I mean, it should, there should be a house sitting there.
That is a nice lot.
Yeah, it's, oh, it's awesome. Cornered lot, yeah, it's very good. So that's the only update I have right now. I do know that we're going to meet again in the not just the future.
And you have a date?
No, I do not.
Am I to get you those minutes? Did he send you the minutes that I typed up?
I haven't been seeing.
Does he not send them to you? I sent them to him like the next day.
The only time I've ever seen minutes is at the meeting. I mean, so.
He never gets a view, Pat? Think of it. I only shut that office a few minutes anymore, you know, like half an hour a day in that office now. It's a little different, though.
Well, that's the only HRC update I have, so. I don't know, Linda, do you have any other?
No, no, I thought the meeting went pretty good.
Yeah, the meeting went well. There was some tension, but, but that being said, we had the, three of the four renters were, were present. And one of the things that, that one of the renters brought up was the fact that maybe they should have representation. And I, I'm not in disagreement. I, I don't know how it would work. Because just like this body, there has to be a certain number of people involved. And, I mean, there's, there are bylaws there. So something would have to be changed in order for that to happen. But I think that they have the right, in my opinion, this is just my opinion, I think they have the right to be represented, so.
I kind of did too. The only thing would be if we sold them, then how do you dissolve that part of it?
That's a good point. And, and maybe all of that will change. That's why we have Sam. I mean, Sam is involved now and we're, I, I don't recall ever dealing with legal representative at all before the last few months. And it's about time because it's, it's kind of a quagmire. So, anyway. Alright, we will then move on to item thirteen, executive session personnel. And you can see that it's not if needed. So obviously there's a personnel issue, but I would need a motion to move into executive session.
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to S D C L one dash two-five dash two and parentheses one.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to enter into executive session pursuant to S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two, pair of one. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Five oh, aye, and seven oh three P.M. Seven oh three P.M. We are in. Seventy-seven, seven five seven. And we are out of executive session. And we'll move on to vacancy advertisement. It says advertisement, but then motion to approve advertising for personnel vacancies. So there are multiple vacancies that are going to be advertised. We would need a motion, and I guess one of them pertains to the city deputy finance officer. And one pertains to, no, I can't remember.
Custodian.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I guess the city custodial position.
Why don't we include at least a part-time cook at the grill?
Well, absolutely, yeah. I mean, it's only going to get busier and it's going to be amazing. Yeah, yeah, actually just. Part-time slash full-time.
That's not, right now, that's not as.
We'll be okay.
The kitchen is a bigger.
It's a big thing, yeah.
Okay, so however you want to word your motion is fine, but you need to have a motion seconded and voted.
I'll make a motion to approve advertising for personnel vacancies in the finance office and for custodian and for part-time cook. I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to advertise for personnel vacancies for the deputy finance office position, custodial position for the city, and part-time cook. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Alright, motion has been, seconded and voted on. Community spender staff, there's Karina Lust.
Short time ago, excuse me. Clint, Irene and I interviewed Karina Lust, who is the kitchen manager down at Total Stop. And she's interested in doing some part-time work evenings and maybe the weekend. And so putting, putting the ropes up at the grill. And I would like to make a motion to approve hiring Karina Lust as a part-time cook. At eleven dollars an hour, effective immediately.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve hiring Karina Lust as a part-time cook for the community center grill at eleven dollars an hour, effective immediately. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? There's another line that says motion to approve hiring, and I don't know if there is anything.
That person did not show up for it.
Okay, so letter B is irrelevant. In that case, the only thing that's left is item sixteen.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll second it.
Oh.
Give us time to consider that?
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn the council. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Alright, well, I'm going to say that that passed at eight oh two P.M. We are adjourned.